Roll. I'm off to a good start.
Winters.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
All right. Item four, Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at City Council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 18th, 2022. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $144,473.32 and payroll expenses of Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Item six, Reports from Staff. We do not have a planning commission report. I don't think we've had a meeting. Hospital didn't meet in July.
Hospital didn't meet in July, not to know the report.
Is there a library board meeting report, Mr. Dowling?
I have an overview. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the event, but I did meet with Sandra before the event to kind of get the highlights. And then if you're really interested, the paper has a pretty good explanation on what has happened. Talking to Larry a little bit, from my understanding, the two major events that occurred were, one, we have board member elections internally. And then we have, there's a state bill number 3702, which is called the Act, that basically adds more vetting for vendors in regards to illicit and inappropriate connections derived from data that they provide to schools, like magazine contents or even database searches, like what we can request from aid for like information materials and stuff like that. It's something that we have to do apparently through the state. The other big thing that happened was, I guess, a person formerly in my seat in the ward that's still a member of the board, actually, he attended the Rocket Festival and had good things to say about that. And apparently, the library will allow you to check out some of that equipment for stands if you have an interest in rocketing yourself. And I think that kind of covered up the highlights. I think there were some touches on the push for what they want to kind of do next year for programs, because they had a lot of success with like the Little Explorer and their other kids' programs. Just kind of, I think, what, working with other calendar events and institutions around town and then working on, I think, smaller groups. But that's at least what I can remember from the paper and kind of the overview Sandra gave. But I could help try to field any questions if there are.
Does the council have any questions?
They still have a lot of books at their books. And it's three days ago.
Oh, and that reminds me, they're working out a partnership. They had some sort of deal with BJCC that they're trying to rekindle.
Well, thank you very much. Next item is the Alba Arena Authority Meeting. I don't think they met either. Tourism Tax Commission Meeting. Mr. Martin.
There were a couple of items to discuss. Northwest Mural Fest came and presented their request. It was unanimously approved. And then the Chamber of Commerce presented their memorandum of understanding. That was a good presentation, kind of cleared some things up that maybe some people were unclear on. That was unanimously approved as well.
Does the council have any questions? Mr. Martin? Thank you. Alba Board of Adjustments Meeting was one of those. Airport Commission Meeting. We do have a couple of items on our agenda that deal with the action items from the airport meeting. And so we'll get to that at that time. Are there any questions regarding the airport meeting? The Recreation Complex Board Meeting.
Okay, now the Alba Parks and Recreation Commission. We met on August the 10th, and the ARC has redone their gym floor, and all the fall sports are beginning to start soon. Courtney's been taking some training sessions so that she can be better prepared to start with this transition that we're getting ready to do. The decision was made, instead of meeting quarterly, we're going to meet on the second Wednesday of every month at 5:00, so that we can work on the changes that we need to go from the Recreation Complex to Parks and Recreation. Dr. Decker updated us on the pool project. The pool plan has been finalized, and we're waiting on the digital files to make brochures and whatever else we're going to do, so that we can do a fundraiser and a reveal soon. And the grant will be hand-delivered on September the 26th.
Any questions for Gail? Thank you. Next item is the Cemetery Meeting. Lyndon, you have a report for us?
Cemetery Board finally met. There was some confusion over dates and times with the change in the administration. We're still looking at green burial. That is where you're buried within 24 hours of your passing. You are not embalmed, and we're, it's a new thing that's developing, and Mr. Chafee is very interested in maybe having an area set aside in our cemetery for that kind of burial, but we have taken no official action. Do you wish me to go into the road?
You can talk about it. I was going to tell you, I have, whether it's absent mindedness or distractions, I haven't addressed it any further, but go ahead.
Well, beware. I'll stick rows on you. If you know the cemetery, the northeast block area. It's right on the hillside to that valley that goes west from where the zoo used to be. We would like to have a road placed in on the east side of that area. There is enough room. They can move a pile of dirt. They're going to have to take out a few trees, which I'm not happy about, but so that you have a bigger area to turn around and come out. Ms. Blunt and Mr. Stan Klein came. They began to notice that people were parking along the road that's already there and having to walk all the way back, and they were elderly, to visit family plots and graves.
The Legion also. The Legion would like to have a road.
And we would like to have a road put in there. And Ms. Blunt and Mr. Klein talked to the county commissioner, and the county commission is willing to use their road crew to put in the road. And that might, you know, be positive there. So that's basically the cemetery report. Can I have my road, please?
Does the council have any questions? I'll get to work on her. I'll probably delegate it, to be honest. All right. Finance Committee Meeting. Mr. Martin.
Pretty general meeting. Crawford Associates called in and gave their report and discussed general things there. Just some quick numbers for you here. City of Alba cash accounts totaled 2.95 million. Investments totaled 1.6 as of July 31. Financial overview by major funds. City has collected almost 8% of budgeted revenue and expended 5.6. Sales tax, sales and use totaled 390,000. This is down 11% from July 21, and down 1.2% from June 22.
Does the council have any questions? Thank you. Next item is the Mayor's Report. We got everybody that was interested in attending the Municipal League Conference registered for that. That will be the, I think, 12th through the 15th in Tulsa. And so we'll have council members as well as some staff attending. That'll be good. We've got, they always have a ton of information at that event, at that education meeting, so that'll be good. We had our first visit with Leroy Alsip as far as his consulting work as a business manager consultant. He was here on the week before last, Friday and Saturday, and he got to spend some quality time with more of our staff than he's been able to prior to on his previous trips. So I know he spent probably an hour and a half, two hours with Stephanie talking about grant opportunities. Attended a meeting at the college with us. He's kind of getting his bearings on everything that's going on, and I've given him a couple other assignments. He's been very forthcoming with information from other cities that he's worked in, whether it's payment entrances or policies or whatever. He's shared a lot of information, and so it's going to be very helpful to have him, you know, around helping us out until we can hopefully get something negotiated out longer term. But that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions. I will go ahead and add, and I'm probably going to forget some things just because it's more than I'm used to, but the water department has responded to two, you know, major line breaks in the last six weeks. And they, Drake and Drake's Crew, they've not, you know, backed away or anything, and they've been very, very good to get out there and do the work and just whatever it took to get it done. They didn't need hardly any direction. They, you know, they did what needed to be done. And this last one, you know, when you've got a break on the main line coming into town out south of Houghton, they, we have two lines that run out there, but, you know, when one of them goes down in the middle of summer, when daylight hits, and that one line isn't enough to supply this town. So they, without even being asked to, worked through the night, got that line back up and opened up. And I don't think very many people even noticed it unless they got Facebook posts about it. So I really appreciate all the work that they've put in the last, you know, six, eight weeks and trying to keep, you know, during a drought, keep water going to the people that need it. So that's been, been good. I plan on, the city does have a program to recognize the efforts of its staff when they do things that are above and beyond, and so I do plan on making sure that each member of that department gets recognized in that way. I just haven't got that prepared yet. Other than that, I'm down here about every day. Not every day, but about every day. So if you guys have any questions, hold it right there. Or if you've got any questions right now, shoot.
If you want to say something about the EMS recognitions and their awards.
Yeah. And I can't remember what they were, but it was Rebecca, wasn't it? And then the department.
Yes. And then at about the same time, Bree.
And Bree got her paramedic. And so EMS is really, help me out, Gail.
Overall, the service got the most improved word, Service Award. And then Bree got her paramedic at the same time, and Rebecca was the individual.
EMT this year.
EMT, yeah.
And that was at the state.
OEMTA, yes.
Yeah, OEMTA. Oklahoma Veterans and Medical Technicians. So, yeah. There's been a lot going on. I know I've forgotten some things, and we obviously need to recognize them as well. Thank you.
I did ask somebody that wanted me to check to see, there's a reporting system online for streets, isn't there? They sent me a picture of it, that round ninth and a locust, they'd asked. I wanted to make sure that we got it.
I got word of that, that it hadn't been addressed in three years. And so I did work with Chief Miller to find out what was going on with that system. Turns out, the system is still being used, but for whatever reason, there's some of it that wasn't being delegated to the folks that needed it to be able to get the work done. So I know with those issues, I haven't gone and checked, but Chief Miller said that he got those assignments made and that at least the potholes had been filled. But like I said, I haven't verified that.
Well, I saw where there were a few filled, but they were talking about some other areas right in there, and it was pretty rough. There were some pretty big holes. I went down there today and just looked again.
Okay. I'll let Chief Miller know that. Go check that out. Anything else? Thank you. There is no business manager's report. Are there any remarks and inquiries by citizens? Well, we're glad you're all here. Number nine is the presentation on City of Alba Grant Initiative by Dr. Stephanie Witt, grant writer for the City of Alba. In case you haven't had an opportunity to meet, Stephanie, she joined us before the end of June on a part-time basis, taking over what would have been left of Burke Fuller's position. Stephanie started full-time on July 1st. So she'd been very busy and has been very actively involved in getting us some additional revenue hopefully coming into town. So I'm going to let Dr. Witt give her presentation.
You have, I believe you all have the paper that took a little bit and prepared for you. You can see on there, first off, we're working on the pool. I believe it was Gail said when it will be submitted, September, we're going to drive it down there, walk in and say, here's all of our stuff. So that'll be done into September. Then the one thing that we're really working on is the retrofit for all the lighting and all the city buildings. Partners, that's the Oklahoma Department of Commerce. You can see there a little bit about what it's going to do, how it's going to help, why do we need to do that. We're currently looking for an energy auditor to come up from Oklahoma City, which then this buckles into the OG&E Sage Program, which is a rebate. A key thing in there is that we have to use contractors approved by OG&E to qualify for the rebate that's there. After the pool grant is submitted, or while it's getting submitted, we'll work on the TAP, the Transportation Alternatives Program. And you can see, it looks like, how can we connect things? How can we get all these roadways, safe passages and whatnot? The one that we're focusing on currently is the Safe Pathways for School, let Marie phrase. Ideally, we would like to look at the, creating the safe pathways for schools so that the kids leaving to and from school, even up the university, all those, it's safe that they have safe sidewalks, ADA accessible, all of that. The Hometown Grant is awarded, they have $25 million that they award over the next five years, and we're looking at $50,000 for our playground equipment. And this was started before I came in, but we've missed this quarter's deadline, so it got pushed back to the deadline for December. So that we have there. The TSET grant comes up, and we're going to look for getting $500,000 to go towards the pool. And getting all of that, you can see the deadline, the March of 23, at the end of there. We have that. And then the very last one currently on the radar is the Recreational Trails Program. We just got notified that it's available, but because the deadline isn't for a significant amount of time, it's been kind of put to the bottom. Let's check off the dates, and as you can see by the deadlines, what's going to go first. Wouldn't want to work on the trails grant. So it's, yes, we know it's available, but not time to take a look at it too in depth. We need to focus on the others. So.
I will let you know that we have worked with, you know, Stephanie's worked to get some processes developed for when the department has become aware of grant opportunities, that she can bring, they can bring those to her. And there's a form that we fill out that we evaluate and determine whether or not it's something we need to pursue or something we need to let go and pursue other priorities. But she has been, she's been doing a really great job. Right now, she's presently working from home, and we're trying to get an office ready for her in a professional building. But she's got a lot, and I'm sure she'd be happy to try to answer.
I will.
Questions if you guys have some.
I don't have any cards, but Mr. Parker can give you my information and all of that, email me, call me, and talk about.
Any questions? Thank you. Next item is Discussion and Action to Approve Tyler Technologies' Invoice, number 025-387404, not to exceed the amount $43,740.29. This is a routine expenditure for the city every year. This is our INCODE system, and, which is basically almost everything that the city operates with. It's its software program, does our accounting, stuff for water, trash, utilities, EMS. There's a little bit of INCODE throughout the city. The invoice this year is about $5,500 over what it was last year. And they said that there was a 5% increase on the existing modules, but that last year, prior to the end of the year, I'm not sure when, I'm guessing it was with Angelica, we signed up for some new items that weren't previously billed to us. So altogether, it's about $5,500 increase over what we spent with Tyler Technologies last year. And if anybody wants, I have, I have the copy of both last year's invoice and this year's invoice. But this is, this is routine. It's just over the spending limit for, we've got to leave that open. Chris, will you open that? We've got to leave that open. Thank you. If anybody wants to look at it, I've got it here.
I emailed you about the purchase order.
Oh, yeah, the purchase order, it just wasn't filled out. The budget is available. When I said I'd bring it, didn't I bring it? Is it with that, Troy? It has been filled out. I'm sorry, Taylor. Would you like me to go get it?
I guess, do you know who requested it?
It would have come from our utility office manager, Heather, but it's, it could have come from anybody. I mean, it's, I think it's on my desk. Do you want to see it?
Just because I asked, but it doesn't have to be right now.
Okay. If it doesn't have to be right now, I will get it for you after the beginning. I apologize. But yeah, I got it, and I made sure it was filled out completely, but it was, I think we got, is it in my packet? It's not, yeah, there is a copy in the packet, but it's not. Tell you what, Troy should have looked at it over here. Or he should have.
Up there.
It's not in there.
I guess, looking through the packet, you saw, I asked this because like underlined said, requested by, the one receipt wasn't filled out without a name, and it wasn't checked as a budgetary expense.
I think the requested by becomes difficult because it's multi-departmental. And it would be budgeted because it is a routine expense. We've averaged it every year, if I've said, on council.
That makes sense.
And after approval.
I crossed that too.
After approval, I'll sign the rest of it. So with that, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd motion to approve the Tyler Technologies' Invoice, 25-387404, not to exceed the amount of $43,740.29.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Bowman, to approve Tyler Technologies' Invoice, 025-387404, not to exceed the amount $43,740.29. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Item 11 is Discussion and Action to Award the Base Bid to DBT Transportation Services in an amount of, or in an amount of $101,426 for the upgrade AWOS 3 PTOAC AVK 23S project, subject to the award of the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission Grant. This is, actually, just got the grant in the mail today, so it's for weather technology system upgrades at the airport, and it's 95% funded through the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission, so 5% is funded through airport funds. This will, at some point in the future, the OAC will send us an agreement regarding the engineering fees, which should cost us around $1,500. I think it's less than 1,414 something, $1,490. But this was approved by the airport board at their last meeting, and so in order for them to, for this item, in order for them to get the grant from the OAC, City Council does have to approve this.
I'd make a motion to approve base bid to DBT Transportation Services in the amount of $101,426 for the upgrade AWOS 3 PTOAC AVK 23-S project, subject to the award of the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission Grant.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beer, to award the bid to DBT Transportation Services for $101,426 for the AWOS project, subject to the OAC grant. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Next item is Discussion and Action to Authorize the Mayor to Execute the OAC Grant Agreement and all other necessary documents for the City of Alba's 5% match on the upgrade AWOS project. Again, like I said, we got the grant stuff in the mail today. I have yet, I haven't called Toby Baker yet, who's our engineer with this project, but he and I will go through that grant and get everything signed up if council approves. Our portion is going to be $5,072, plus the future engineering fees.
I would motion to authorize the mayor to execute the OAC grant agreement and all other necessary documents for the City of Alba's 5% match on the AWOS project.
My second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beer, to authorize the mayor to execute the OAC grant agreement and all other necessary documents for the 5% match on the AWOS project. Is there any further discussion?
Is there any idea what the engineering fees are going to be roughly in the future?
Yeah, it's going to be, so that $1,490 is 5%. So. So I can't do the math in my head.
That's right.
It's going to be, what, roughly 20,000? Does that sound?
More than that.
Somewhere in there.
Yeah, because 3,000 would be 10%, so be around 30,000, 28, 30,000 probably.
The Aeronautics Commission has already approved the engineering and so that, their side of it is, is accomplished. And we don't have a say in that, no. Is there any, are there any other questions? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item 13 is discussion and action to authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter with HSPG and Associates PC. Last month, we approved the proposal from HSPG to do our financial audit. And so in order to, to do that, then we have to also sign the engagement letter. Drew, you looked at the letter?
Yes.
Everything's in order?
I think so. If anything stuck out, so.
Basically, they'll be doing a modified cash basis audit of our financials and we'll get them going on pretty quickly. Taylor, I know you and I spoke, I did not have, I did not receive any word back from.
The cost of packing.
Right. But, you know, we might be able to get that. The agreement was in the packet. Does anybody have any questions? I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter with HSPG and Associates.
My second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling, to authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter with HSPG and Associates PC. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Item 14 is discussion and action to approve the agreement between the Woods County Emergency Medical Services District Board of Trustees and the City of Alva to provide ambulance services in Woods County. We've been waiting on this action item for some time. The agreement, Drew's looked at it, we put in some language to protect our interest a little bit more than what the draft agreement would have. And, and that was also in your packet, I think.
Yes, can you specify that later?
There were, actually it was more taking some out than adding.
Was it what you had highlighted?
Yes, yes. So item eight, it had asked, I want to get the agreement too. Well, the very first paragraph, we, it had listed just ambulance services instead of City of Alva, so we changed that to City of Alva. Item eight was a proof of certification and it says, it had originally stated that we would provide a copy of the inspection reports issued by the State of Oklahoma within two weeks of receipt. The language now states, within two weeks of request. I didn't want us to get in a position where we were not compliant with the terms of the agreement because of, you know, a timing issue, whatever might be going on whenever we actually get our certificate. It doesn't necessarily come at, you know, one particular time. It'll, it'll get here when it gets here, when the state sends it. So they can request it, we'll, within two weeks, we'll give them a copy of our certificate. There was, under 10B, they had wanted to have us permit their trustees or, or any designee of theirs, free access to the books and equipment. And we felt like that was an overreach. And so we, the language that's now in there is, within two weeks, upon request, provider agrees to provide trustees with a net, with a copy of the annual audit and operating financial reports. The inspection of the equipment is not relevant to the agreement, so we struck that. Under 11, the original language stated that, this is regarding the monies, the original language stated that the account should be controlled by and all expenses shall be signed for by the EMS director and a designated city town official. That's not, the EMS director being in that role is not how we operate. And so the new language, it just strikes that last sentence. We will maintain all the monies in a separate bank account, which is subject to audit in separate pool of general fund or primary budget funds. And that language still remains in there. And that, those were the, those were the main items.
Because they're not concerned that designating response time being outside of scope of their, where they fall, as well as basically mandating that we take out of district halls, not that I'm saying we wouldn't, but I, I feel like much of this language is outside of the scope of what that board is designed and intended to do.
My understanding is that's consistent with state requirements. So basically, it's, it doesn't hurt it to be there, it doesn't, doesn't obligate us any further than we presently are.
On 10B, the very last phrase on this report says, operating fiscal reports. Should that not say financial reports? Because it does in, in this one.
What do you think?
Does that?
What was it on the original? I think we kept it consistent with what they, they had in here on the original one, operating fiscal reports and we kept it similar language.
Okay, good.
Is there a different section here?
No, no, because I, I thought that one said financial.
No, it also, it also says.
I, I wrote financial and Drew left it consistent with the rest of the agreement language.
Okay, good. I just wanted to drop that.
Is there any other discussion?
In the, in section three, prior to payment of any compensation in a new contract year, trustee shall be entitled to, and provider shall submit to the trustees a budget for each such contract year, which budget shall be accepted by the trustees unless disapproved by them within 30 days of submission. So does that not, to some extent, give them control over our budget and the ability to It's the last paragraph of section three.
I'd say that, I mean, that does give them, I guess, some control over this was, I think, their kind of standard contractor agreement that they had. I understand that.
Drew, just to clarify my understanding, you're, you're saying that this is also the one that the other people who were participating in the 522 district signed, except for obviously the modifications we made?
This is what was provided to us and then we retyped up to add and change a few things in there, yes. Yep.
I wonder how different this is from like Alva County or some other areas that have been there for us as far as like the 522 agreements and stuff. I wonder if they've kind of gone above and beyond with language and stuff that's out of the ordinary of others.
What I was told, it was kind of a boilerplate thing. I didn't look at other counties. This, this does though accomplish what we needed to. It gets us the ability to contract with them and gets to where they can write us a check.
Yeah, that paragraph, there's, in my opinion, there's still levels of overreach that go above and beyond what the, what that board is intended for.
Do you want to strike that whole paragraph?
Yeah, there's a lot of disagreement I would like to strike, but that one is a sword I will buy on.
Is it possible to have a separate budget just for the 522?
But we've got an EMS budget.
Yes, but can we do what, what they're going to give us money for as a separate area?
The money we would collect from the 522 district is less than the amount of money we pay in personnel wages. We are entitled to the entirety of the funds regardless of what they, their job is to just ensure that we have expenses that exceed that amount. And we do, I don't mind providing them with the budget, but they don't get to control our department. And that gives them even an inkling of control. And we set, when we presented this to the community and put this for a vote, that Alva EMS would still be under the City of Alva, that we would not be creating a board to oversee it. This agreement creates a board that oversees our EMS department.
I, I'm good with whatever you guys want to do.
I mean, I, I get that we've been sitting and need, you know, need these funds, but I can't in good conscience with the words that I said to the people of the city agree to that agreement.
So what, what I, I mean, there's some things we can do. I mean, we can take action to approve as amended. At this, at this point, I don't think we've heard anything except for stretch that paragraph or there's any other.
That would be, that would be the big one. The, the rest of them, most of them are within compliance of, of like you said, state law. I think it's outside of their purview, but so, you know, my, my concern would be that it is not, not their job to, to make sure that we're meeting response times, for instance. That's, that's not in their purview. And how this is written, we don't meet those response times, we're in violation of the agreement, they don't have to pay us.
So what we can do is whoever makes the motion can make a motion to accept the agreement striking paragraphs.
And we talked to the Department of Health EMS Division about it, they've got a lot of oversight of the 522 districts. And they used to talk to us quite a bit about what they could, could do, you know, back to us directly.
I have not.
It's fine to work hand in hand, but it seems like they, it seemed like they're wanting to be kind of one-sided. I mean, I'm sorry to be opinionated, but they, you know, with some of the language they put in or that.
This to me was as close as to what they sent us, as I felt like we could do and still accomplish what we needed to.
I, I think the, the big ones that stand out to me, that would give them any, any ability really to come back on us. Because the other ones, I mean, are, they are within compliance to state law. We're having to meet those regardless. I mean, if we're not meeting those, we're not operating any EMS department anyways. Would be that last paragraph of section three, as well as the entirety of section seven. Those are the, the two big ones that jump out to me.
Of course, we can make the, approve that with the modifications, never send it to them and then their law will come back to us too. So, I mean, we can send them what we want.
We can.
When I remember receiving this contract, I thought the discussion was that the other two departments involved in this district have already accepted their agreement. So hell knows everyone about that.
I would make a motion to approve the agreement by amending, removing the last paragraph of section three and section seven in its entirety.
My second.
Okay, thank you. Let me bring this down. I have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beer, to approve the agreement between the Woods County Emergency Medical Services District Board of Trustees and the City of Alva to provide ambulance services in Woods County, as presented, striking paragraph, or section three, paragraph two, and striking section seven. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
I'm staying.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
We'll get those changes made and get it signed and sent over to them for their approval and I'll let you know when the money hits the bank. Item 15 is discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to A 25OS 307B2 to discuss the contract negotiations with IAFF Local 3782 of Oklahoma and B 25OS 307B1 to discuss employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining or resignation of city business manager, assistant city business manager, fire chief, police chief, EMS director, public records director, park system recreation director, cemetery sexton, water wastewater supervisor, street supervisor, sanitation supervisor, airport manager, library director and office manager. Before we take action to enter into this executive session, I want to, I want to just point out that I understand how daunting and maybe concerning that might be to have all that on our agenda. That being the, the case, by state statute and our form of government as the mayor, I cannot, I cannot take action regarding department heads without council approval. So therefore, I want to have those conversations with you guys in executive session. And we will be talking about some performance and some opportunities for promotion and some things like that. So in order to make sure that we can talk about the entire picture, that's why I wanted to have the agenda stated that way. I sent an email out to the staff on, on Friday, I said, nobody's getting fired after this meeting. So I'm standing by that, nobody's getting fired after this meeting. But those are all the things that we could end up talking about every one of those positions and I think it's an important conversation that we need to have, so.
So we're not going to take action after we're talking?
We may take some action. So I guess you guys could tell me to fire somebody, but I, that's not why, it's not why this is on the agenda.
Will we revisit, let me get a, you know, a city manager, will we revisit this item of the, you know, the city manager's?
City manager, I'd have to look at the rules on the city manager, who never operated it such that the city manager had to have council approval for these things.
They make, they make, they get to know the departments though and make a lot of the suggestions as far as the kind of items.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, without their input, I just wouldn't really want to make any decisions.
It's all a conversation I want to have with you guys. So that being the case, I entertain a motion.
I would motion to enter into executive session as stated.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling, to enter into executive session to discuss the firefighter union contract and the employment, hiring, appointment, and promotion. Motion, disciplining, resignation of the stated positions, or stated individuals. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right. With IAFF Local 3782 Alva, Oklahoma.
I'd make a motion to approve the contract as presented with IAFF Local 3782.
My second. I have a motion from Mr. Stelling, a second from Mr. Dowling, to approve the contract with Local 3782 Alva, Oklahoma, firefighter union contract, or 2022, 2023. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Next item is action on employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, devotion, disciplining or resignation of A through N positions.
I'd make a motion to, what was it, authorize you to offer the decision to, what, what do you choose to pick up?
I just, I was waiting on it, I saw it ready.
Okay. For both Cortney and Nasserella to grade 13 Parks and Recreation Director.
My second. I second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Stelling, a second from Mrs. Beer, to promote Cortney Nasserella to grade 13 Parks and Recreation Director. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Abstain.
Brooks?
Abstain.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
There is no further action to be taken coming out of executive session. We do not have anything that meets the requirements for new business. Are there any remarks and inquiries by council members?
Have you heard anything about petition audit?
No, other than they don't have it finished and don't, can't tell me when they will.
Oh, the last word was, just waiting for the head cheese to sign off, and they're waiting on the, that's, the school thing, too.
Effective awareness.
Yeah, it's starting to feel like that's a convenient excuse.
But they finished that, so.
Well, at least we moved on from COVID, it's ended.
They have not requested any further information from the city, and they have not contacted us otherwise. All right, anything else? Thank you all. We will adjourn the city council meeting and open regular meeting for the Alva Utility Authority. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin? Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 18, 2022. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $201,084.53 and payroll expenses of $74,404.97. And item C, approval of claims in the amount of $487,491.98 and payroll expenses of $95,984.97.
A motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
We have no other business. Utility authority is adjourned, and we will open the regular meeting of the Alva Economic Development Authority. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin? Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda and will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 18, 2022. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $18,426.74 and payroll expenses of $11,658.93. And approval of June claims in the amount of $50,627.3 and payroll expenses of $26,485.19. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Thank you all. We are adjourned.